It's opened back up the workshop and we have Dr. Marjorie Wallace with us today from McPherson and Jacobson. And I know we've got some other people on teams.
Right.
And there they are, fantastic. And what we did before is we'll let you present and then we'll go around and ask some questions.
Okay.
But that way, you know, we don't want to ask questions and you're going to give us the answers eventually in the presentation.
I hope so.
So we appreciate you coming and y'all on teams, thanks for joining in and take it away.
Okay, well, great.
Thank you. Again, my name is Marjorie Wallace. Thanks for inviting us to present our proposal for you today. What we're going to do in our presentation will probably highlight the guidelines that you sent to us. And that was very helpful in us developing our proposal. I believe that you'll see that we answered all of those questions or addressed the guidelines. And I guess before we go too much further, I should introduce our other two consultants. And Ralph, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Ralph Furry. I've been with McPherson and Jacobson for approximately five years. And currently I've also taken on the role as the Director of the Eastern Region for our firm. And I'm a retired superintendent from New York and New Jersey. And I was a superintendent for 21 years. And currently I reside in Lake Mary, Florida. I've been here for three years enjoying being a full-time Florida resident. And I've conducted many searches throughout the East, particularly in New York, Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania. And we very much are looking forward to getting back into Florida as the firm has done some outstanding, successful searches in Florida in the past. So thank you very much for having us today.
All right, Michelle?
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name is Michelle Hamilton. I reside in Marietta, Georgia, so not too far from you guys. I have been with McPherson and Jacobson for a little over four years. I retired as an area superintendent from Mississippi, Jackson, Mississippi, and currently work for the Georgia Department of Education as a district improvement specialist. And so again, we thank you for this opportunity to present our proposal.
Okay, great. And as we've said, I'm Marjorie Wallace. I live up in Pinellas County. I started out as a special ed teacher back in 1970. I've worn many hats as an administrator, federal programs, head of human resources. I worked for an educational service agency. I was their executive director. We oversaw 17 school districts and we provided over 110 programs to those districts and to the state of Pennsylvania. I started working for McPherson and Jacobson when I retired. I've done many searches as Ralph has and Michelle has across the country. Like you saw, we're based out of Nebraska, but we go all over. We go all over. So we have many consultants. In fact, my very first search was here in Florida, in Duval County. And I just have to brag a little bit about that one because you probably might know him. Nikolai Viti was their superintendent and they wanted him to stay on after his five-year term. But he was called back to his hometown of Detroit and that's where he is now. And I just want to say that this year he was named the number one urban superintendent in the United States. So that's the quality of characters and clients and recruiters that I think we can bring to you. I just wanted to share that one of our Florida. So Ralph, if you have that, I guess we can move on. We have the first-
I have the PowerPoint, but I'm not seeing where I have the ability to share on Teams.
Are you-
Yeah. Do you have it on your computer?
I do have it on my computer, but it's back up there. I don't have it on this computer. Is Amanda here?
Yes, you have only the video. If we can assist him, just give us one minute.
They're going to give you, give them one minute, Ralph, and they will assist you to be able to do that, okay? But I do have it here as well, if we want to do it that way. You have in front of you our proposal, which is much longer, of course, yeah.
Let me also mention that in addition to the successful search in Duval County, that our firm also very successfully placed Barbara Jenkins as a superintendent of schools in Orange County. And she served in that role for 10 years. And from my perspective and what I've learned, did an exceptional job in Orange County as well. We've also worked in very large districts, Metlinburg County in North Carolina. I myself worked with another consultant in Washington County, Maryland. And so we do have extensive experience working in large county systems. Dr. Hamilton and I are working currently together. We'll have our search well near completion if we're fortunate enough to be awarded your search. And Dr. Wallace and I worked together several years ago on a very successful and challenging search in North Allegheny, Pennsylvania, outside of Pittsburgh. So I'd love to be able to share the PowerPoint. I'm just waiting to get the ability to-
Ralph, if you press Share up there, we think you'll be able to-
I can't locate Share.
Upright. Do you see it?
No, it's not there.
I'm sorry, folks. I know you've had a long morning. You're fine.
Not your fault.
Okay.
I have on the bottom, it says Open Share Tray, but I don't have the ability, I don't see an icon at all for sharing.
I brought not one, but two other computers. So Amanda, if you could help me get mine up.
I will. I'll have them switched with you.
However, if the board has a proposal in front of them, we could walk through it that way. It's the same exact information.
It's just hard, you know, when we go to different school districts. Everyone has a different format and things.
It's up there now. You can scroll through and the screen's-
All right, thank you. Thanks, Amanda. Okay, we're starting. Okay.
Okay.
Some of this we've already done. Okay. And it's just, how does yours- Amanda, how's this computer work with it? Just the-
You can use the mouse and scroll.
Okay.
Use a PDF rather than a PowerPoint.
Oh, okay. So this is the, okay. Can you just show me real quick how this is working with yours? I don't think my, it's taken my, oh wait.
I can do it for you.
Here we go. Wait, I think I've got it. I think I've got it. No, I don't. It's not moving for me. Must not like my fingerprints. Here we go. Oh no, it's going, whoa, I'm sorry. Okay. This is the proposal. This is the proposal, not the, you know what, I'm just going to take this and run this. Okay, PowerPoint. Ralph, if you find that you're able to get the PowerPoint up, that would be great. But if not, I'm going to just talk a little bit about us, okay?
Very good.
Okay, all right. Well, we are a leading national firm. In fact, we've been in business since 1991. We've placed over 940 different superintendents around the country. We have lots of consultants. As you can see in that proposal, they're all in the back. They're listed in the back. There's over 130 of them. And in there is also Ralph's and Michelle's and my resume, so you can look at that.
I believe I have the PowerPoint up now.
Okay, well, that's going to make life a little easier for me, but I was going to, okay. All right, you do. Again, I really apologize.
Just going to go back to the beginning?
We're really bombing this, aren't we? Got it?
All right, we got it.
You got it?
Yep. Can everyone see it when I put it up?
Not yet.
No, I don't have it here either. Yeah, we've got the proposal up. I think everyone has the proposal up. We're not getting the PowerPoint up.
Let's just work through the proposal then. That's fine.
Okay, well, as I said, if you'll help me, I have the PowerPoint right here. Amanda, if you could hook this up through your screen. We can't, but if somebody can email it to me, I can have it on there. Okay, let's see. I'm going to have to move this, I guess, in a second. If I can email it to you. Send a copy. What's your email? No, it's not going to do it because I'm not even-
Sorry, let me see what connection you have on your laptop. I'm going to just plug you in. Let me look in the background.
I've got another one if it's easier. Like I said, I've got this one. Is that going to be easier?
I don't think so. I need an HDMI port. Let me see what I got right there.
Because my screen is showing that the PowerPoint is up on Share Screen.
Okay. We'll get this done, I promise.
If you can email it, this is the email that you sent to.
Okay, see if I can get, do you mind, Amanda, just staying here for one second and just maybe making sure that, because when I tried to do it, it said I couldn't get in. Maybe you can.
Two.
I don't have the credit.
Seven.
Okay.
One.
Yeah. Ralph, can you send it to this address?
Hang on a second. I'm trying one other thing.
Okay.
Saying I have to put a sharing key in or a meeting ID.
I can't help you, right. I don't know what to tell you. But I do have an email that you can send it to and she can help me here because my computers aren't compatible currently. They needed to-
That I can do.
Okay. Let me give you the email, all right? And send a copy of the PowerPoint to her. Okay?
What's the email?
M-E-A-N, as in Nancy, S-A at manateeschools.net. Dot. Okay, she's there. Well, anyway, as we're, I'm going to go ahead and start while we're trying to get that up. I can do my part, I think. I don't have that many slides to tell you. Background of McPherson and Jacobson. I'll just read it to you. "We believe every student is entitled to a high-quality education. We strongly believe quality education is dependent upon quality leadership. We know that students have diverse needs and we recruit candidates who have experience in culturally proficient practices to meet those needs. And transparency is the hallmark of our process. Our mission is to ensure that each search results in quality leadership for educational excellence." That would have been on a PowerPoint. So I'm moving on to the next one. So we don't hire superintendents, okay? We work with you. You're totally in control of the process at all times. Now, we do work with stakeholders and we'll explain that a little bit later. Ralph has that part. And they're able to give some meaningful input to you, but obviously it's your decision ultimately. But the stakeholder meetings that we have, people can come to them and we, as I said, Ralph will talk about that. And if they can't, we have it online, so we get a whole report that we'll give to you of everybody who has the, who wants to give you input and to let you know what they're thinking about, who they think should be the next superintendent here. Let's see. I'm trying to make sure that I'm not going over. Okay. "Our retention rates for people have been very good. Over 85% of the superintendents that we've placed over the last five years are still in their jobs. Over 60% for the last 10 years are still there. And almost 45% of them after 15 years are still working in their jobs." The investment, this is probably what you want to hear. We tell you right upfront what it's going to cost. And of course, I was here listening to the others. We are cheaper. Our total is $49,120. Okay, that includes the phases of our process, which there's five phases of our process. 30 days on American Association of School Administrators as far as advertising. 30 days on Top Schools Jobs, which is an Ed Week Online. 30 days of advertising on National Alliance of Black School Educators. Six weeks of advertising on Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Three consecutive days of in-person stakeholder meetings with four consultants. And as I said, Ralph will talk a little bit more about that, but that's my favorite part of the process when we get to get all this input that we can share with you. And then again, as I said, the online stakeholder input surveys. We do video interviews for the candidates that you choose, usually the last three. We'll ask them to do a video for you to be able to see before you bring them in. We do all the background checks like they were saying. We do not do the $1,900 one that he was talking about. But I can assure you that we dig very, very deep now and people in our office are very well-equipped to be able to look at all the social media and all the things that were described before. We do the criminal, financial, credentials, background checks, who you, you know, of the candidates that you have chosen to interview, not on everyone, okay? We do those ourselves, but what we present to you as those, we do in-depth, in-depth, like they were talking about. There's some travel expenses, obviously, for our people. Ralph, as he said, lives in Florida. I live right up next county up here. And there's some office expenses, but that's our bottom line, $49,120, okay? As I mentioned, there's five phases of the superintendent's search, okay? The first phase, it allows, we do this because it allows you as a board to really concentrate on what's most important, which we think is interviewing and selecting your superintendent. So we try to make it as easy as we can for you. And we try to do a lot of the work that will help you. The first phase is we sit with you and we work, we take the whole board through a process that we establish the characteristics of the superintendent that you want. What are you looking for? Do you need somebody who's really strong in budgeting? Or do you need somebody that's very strong in human resources? But anyway, that's what we do. We really work with you and we get a consensus from this board of what you're looking for. What are the characteristics you want? And that's our template that we use to recruit and to look for people, okay? Each district is different. Each district has their own unique needs and that's what we try to address. Then we establish the timeline for this and we set the time of when you want your superintendent to start, when you want to set the interviews, all of that, all of that stuff that we do. And we do that with a person called what we call the point of contact. And I have a folder, in fact, here with that and it will, it will explain all the duties that we do with point of contact. Usually it may be a secretary that you work with. It's not one of you, okay? It's someone that's going to set up the meetings, make sure the room's available, that type of thing that we can't do because, you know, obviously we're working with you, making sure that the computer works, that type of thing, you know? So anyway, but they have all the responsibilities in what they do. So that's what we do in the Phase 1. And then, as I said, those advertising venues that I described to you are ones that we use, but we're certainly open and we work with you for local ones, you know, whatever else you like to use for advertising. So that's pretty much, but as I said, it's a five-phase. And Ralph, if you're ready to talk about Phase 2, 3, and 4, I'm going to-
Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So let me go through Phase 2, 3, and 4. So once the criteria are identified, which are critical, the next phase for us is to come down and work within the county. We'll work with you as a board and with the point of contact to identify all of the stakeholder groups within the county that you want us to meet with. And we will come down and conduct interviews with those representatives from stakeholder groups to include teachers, administrators, support staff, community groups, anyone that you wish us to meet with throughout the county. And most importantly, we really would like to meet with high school students and middle school students perhaps because the students can really give us excellent insights into what we need to do to proceed in terms of identifying an exceptional superintendent. We will then, in addition to that, there will be an online survey that will ask the same questions that we ask through the stakeholder process. And what'll occur there is that'll go up for approximately a week. And we really want to work with your communications department to ensure that everyone in the county understands that this is available to them. And particularly, these are for those individuals who don't have the ability to either attend a stakeholder meeting or are not included within the stakeholder meeting process. However, we also encourage that we have open community meetings for the stakeholders so anyone can attend those meetings. And we basically ask four questions, two of which help us recruit, which is, which are all the, what, tell us about all the phenomenal and outstanding aspects of Manatee County and why that would be a wonderful place to live. And certainly, we know it is an outstanding place to live with so much it has to offer. And then we also look at what are the outstanding aspects of the school district? I've gone through some of the information. I know that you have a strategic plan and that is important for us to completely understand as well. And then we go to the question that most folks want us to, that really they want to put the input in. And that is what are the challenges that the next superintendent of schools is going to need to address if he or she is going to be successful within the county? And then the fourth question is tell us about the characteristics, experiences, and backgrounds that you feel are important for your next educational leader. We will publish a report, get that back to you as a board, encourage you to put that on your website. And, you know, it's important for everyone to know that they've had input into the process as well as it's important for the candidates who are interested in applying for the position, particularly candidates who are very successful in their current positions. And they have to have a clear understanding of the sunshine laws of Florida that as soon as they apply, that the confidentiality that they would expect really is not there because of how important the sunshine laws are in Florida. So they have to know what are the challenges and are they going to apply for the position and hopefully have a goal of being the successful candidate. And then we will do extensive recruitment in Phase 3 where we will start going through the application process. We will, again, as Marjorie mentioned, conduct extensive reference checking. One of the things that the firm has done, it's changed its approach, is that instead of just doing the reference check on the final candidate, we will do the reference checks on the four, or five, or six candidates that we present to you as a board because we don't want any surprises that might come up in the- we don't want any surprises that might come up in the, uh, uh, information. So with that, um, the next, uh, process is to, uh, ask the candidates to conduct, uh, videos. And we will work with you as a board to create three questions for these videos. And the candidates are offered the opportunity to create a nine-minute video, answer each question three minutes. And, uh, that is important because we then show those videos to you when we present the candidates to include their application, their answers to the questions on the application, the extensive reference check, and the videos. And, uh, that is very important, um, piece, because I find that that, and boards find that that is something that is very powerful to them when they're determining who they really would like to interview. And, uh, so, you know, and then we do all of our recruitment as well during that time, and, uh, extensive advertisement, and we work with you, uh, consistently throughout the process, uh, keeping the process very transparent. Uh, and, uh, then we, and as we're preparing for phase four, which, uh, Dr. Hamilton will go through, we also work with the board on developing interview questions so that the bank of interview questions you're going to utilize during your interview process is consistent for all the applicants. So that's an overview of phases, um, two and three.
Okay.
Dr. Hamilton?
Yes. So phase four, as Ralph was, uh, going into, is the interview preparation. As you guys prepare for the interview, we will work with you side by side to help you develop key interview questions. We ask that each board member, uh, submit, uh, at least five questions. And what we do, we merge any common themes together and create a, uh, list of questions that you guys will use, uh, once you review those questions and approve. And then we establish interview and visitation procedures. How do you want to conduct the interviews? Uh, we generally, as stated before, we bring at least a shortlist, three to four candidates that we have vetted, uh, deeply to, to you, and you decide on how you want to, uh, proceed with the, uh, with the interview process. Some, some boards, uh, offer opportunities for stakeholders to participate in the interview process, but that is totally up to you as a board. Uh, we will contact the final candidates and schedule interview times for the candidates once we, um, get a timeline, so we'll schedule those interviews. We will assist and make an arrangement for visiting, uh, if, if that's your desire to have the candidates to visit the school. We, we do a lot of, most of the legwork for you to make this process easy for you to select your next superintendent. If you opt to, uh, sometimes the, we coordinate times where the spouse, uh, the candidate will visit as well. And so we keep all candidates informed of the status. Uh, we make those contacts to those candidates who made the shortlist, as well as those who have, did not make that list. And as stated previously, we conduct a thorough background check on those candidates that we present to you, including criminal, financial, and educational background verification.
Thank you. Ralph?
So after, after, uh, phase, after you then hire your next, uh, educational leader, we stay with you, we stay with the district for at least a year. Uh, and initially, we conduct phase five. We will work with your new superintendent and you as a board, where we will work with, um, some board training, uh, clarification of roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and of the board, obviously, but more importantly, collaborating with you and the new superintendent to develop, uh, evaluation goals, uh, for that superintendent for the first year. And we will work with you, uh, throughout the school year. Quite frankly, I've placed some superintendents that I am still in contact with regularly, and we're well beyond the one-year time period, uh, just to, uh, provide, they may have questions, they need, may need some advice, and, uh, we take a lot of pride in that. And I'm, and we believe that helps us in terms of the continuity, because we know that the continuity of the superintendent in the position is extremely important, not only to the superintendent, but we also find that when our superintendents have excellent continuity in the district, so do our board members. And, and that then translates to outstanding educational achievement for students. Uh, so that's important to us. Uh, I want to also emphasize that we do a lot of work in terms of ensuring that we develop a, um, pool of candidates that is diverse. We advertise in diverse, um, venues. I will work with you in terms of that as well. And it's also important to emphasize that we, as a firm, do not have, and for the lack of better term, I'll say, a, uh, we don't have a stable of candidates that we move from a position, one district to the next, to the next. We specifically recruit candidates that are specific to the district, that are, uh, specific to the criteria that you develop as a district, because that is very, very important to ensure that the marriage between the next superintendent and the board and the community is, uh, effective, which then translates to longevity. And in the, uh, proposal, you'll see that we do have a two-year guarantee that for whatever reason, uh, a superintendent may leave, that we'll repeat the search at no cost, with the exception of, uh, the expenses for travel. Uh, but in my experience, I have not had to repeat a search, uh, to date, and all of the placements that we've had have been very successful.
Okay. Well, we want to be respectful of your time, and thank you for being so patient with us and with our technology. But we're opening it now, I guess, for some questions, and...
So anybody want to start? We want to go one way, went the other way, so I'll just go with who wants to start first? If nobody, I do have a question about...
Yes.
...the videos.
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it. Um, how many, how many, is that after we've trimmed it down to finalists, let's say, or semifinalists? At what point are, are those videos conducted? You know, let's say you get thirty applications in, now we've trimmed it down to ten, and it's going to be those ten, and then from there, we're picking to the three? Maybe just elaborate a little more on that process?
Usually, as I, as, as Norm said, we may bring like four, or five, six, maybe, candidates to you, and then probably with your discussion, you'll trim it down to probably maybe like three peoples normally. Would you not agree with that, Michelle and Ralph? About three? And that's when we do the videos, because those are the people you really want to concentrate on. But Ralph, go ahead.
Well, let me, let me interject on that. Um, we, we have no problem at all having the candidates complete the video that we initially present to you. So we, we don't have to wait until the final three. So let's say, for instance, when I did, uh, when I've done searches where, for instance, in Norfolk, Virginia, uh, they wanted to see eight candidates. We had all eight candidates complete the videos. And, uh, and that really helped that board determine who they wanted to interview, how many of the candidates. And in that case, the, the Norfolk board chose to interview all eight of those candidates.
Right.
And then narrow it down from there. So we tailor-make the process to what you see as important as a board. We're flexible there. And I find that those videos are very powerful.
Yes, they are. So, yeah.
Yeah, something, yeah. Ms. Forman?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, first, when you were talking about the advertising, um, I didn't hear you mention EdWeek.
Yes, we...
We do.
...we advertise in education. We, we, we encourage using online, so we do advertise at EdWeek. We advertise, obviously, on our website. Uh, we have, uh, approximately, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand hits on our website per month. Uh, we will send out, uh, emails and, uh, information to all of our consultants throughout the country. Uh, we put it on social media, LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter. We, uh, advertise for the American Association of School Administrators, the, uh, National Alliance of Black School Administrators, and the Latin, and the Association for Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Uh, so we really do, uh, what I believe to be an exceptional job. Uh, we participate in job central at the American Association of School Administrators, and, uh, we, we cast a very extensive advertisement, uh, process throughout the country.
Okay. Right. And as I mentioned, any others that you want, we can add. You know, that's up to you as a board. Those are ones we automatically do.
Hey, you, you talked about presenting four to five candidates to the board. Are you, what about the, the, let's say we've got twenty people who...
Right.
...who put in their applications. Are we being given all twenty? Or are you just narrowing it down to the four or five that you think appropriate?
Ralph, do you want to answer that?
Yes, if you so choose and you want the, uh, the credentials of everyone that applies for the position, we will get that information to you.
Right.
Absolutely.
It's totally transparent, everyone. Now, we do keep their names confidential, obviously.
Uh, I'm sorry, how do you do that?
Ralph, do you want to explain that?
Well, we, in Florida, we can't because it's of the sunshine law.
Right, right.
So, the bottom line is the applicants in Florida will all be, uh, there isn't no confidentiality there.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Yeah, and I do have, as I said, and I operated under Pennsylvania laws too, but I think of some of the Midwest, they don't, but we do. Everything will be open and transparent.
So it's critical on our part to explain to the candidates that when they're applying for a position, particularly if it's someone from another state, uh, that they have to understand that the, that their candidacy is going to be made public.
Right, right. Sorry about that, yeah. That's, many of the other states don't, so that's what's...
But we get the others only if we request.
No, if you want them, we'll give them to you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give anything you want. But, you know, we don't want to overwhelm you either. Do you, I mean, if you want us to pare it down to what those unique characteristics were, uh, but we can certainly give you all the applicants that, that we did get.
Okay. Um, talking about the team and the functions, how are you, how do you work together, uh, your functions, uh, if there's, let's say, a, a focus group meeting? Who would be the person attending the focus group meeting and...
Probably to keep your costs down, to be honest with you, it would be me, but I would not be the lead person. He is in charge of the East Division, as he mentioned, Ralph. So Ralph will be your lead person on this, but I will probably be the person. Would you not think, Ralph, that would be doing a lot of the other meetings and things that you would need?
Michelle and I work, work very well together in Alexandria City. Michelle, you want to explain how we've done that? And, yeah?
Right. And, and we love to come face to face, but again, that entails a, uh, expenditure on your end, and I guess I would be the one that's coming from the fathers, and that's Georgia, which is not too far. But we, uh, would definitely like to be in the space, meeting. We did two full days, started early, the morning, and ended late in the evening, uh, six, seven, eight o'clock in the evening, meeting with group stakeholders. So we are open to being there with you or with, and meeting with those stakeholders. So that, that is one that we'd love to do face to face.
Right.
Right. And normally, the way that looks is, uh, and, and sometimes folks have said, well, how many people do you limit to a stakeholder session? I've conducted stakeholder sessions, for instance, in Roanoke, Virginia, we had an open, public stakeholder session that was televised. Uh, there were approximately two-hundred people attending. And what we do is one of us, we, we'll alternate. One of us will facilitate while the other records all the information that, and all of the responses to our questions, because we want to assure those folks who are attending our stakeholder meetings that they're going to be heard and that what they have to share with us will be shared with the board and within the stakeholder report, uh, which is very, very important.
That's the...
And we also iterate to them, uh, that it is categorized by groups, not necessarily by a person or position. For instance, we met with the mayor and city council members, uh, recently, and so we just categorize that as the city officials. And so, uh, we assure the stakeholders so we can get the most valued feedback, valuable feedback from them. We assure them that it is done by groups instead of individuals.
And you help us choose those groups if you want the business community to be a stakeholder? Again, like we said, the students, if, high school students, perhaps middle school students as well, uh, church associations, whatever that you feel those stakeholders. And then again, we have it online, so anyone who can't make to one of the stakeholders meetings can provide that input, and that goes into the entire report that we give you. So everyone feels like they have a meaningful voice in, in that.
Okay. And then let's talk a minute about your Florida experience. Um, do you have any superintendents in place now that you helped place?
I do not.
Well, the most recent one was, uh, Dr. Jenkins in Orange County, and she just recently retired this year.
Okay. And so that was like ten years ago, right? I mean, she was here...
Placed her ten years ago, yes, but, uh, she was in, you know, she was in Orange County and has been there for ten years.
But one of the plus, not plus, but, but the fact that we are from other areas, and I'm from Pennsylvania, we can recruit from all over too. And Florida's not hard to sell. Florida is usually a state that people want to come to. So that's, you're very lucky. You know, that's one that, that helps us a lot.
There are a lot of, I don't know how the, um, cultural sensitivity, you know, um, problems that are now facing...
Right.
...school, school boards and public schools. Are you finding any current challenges in the current environment? And how are you, and if so, how are you adapting to those?
Well, I can say that one-third of our applicants for the past five years, because you're saying current, yes, it's more that we're addressing that, have been female, and almost one-fourth of our applicants have been ethnically diverse.
Let me, let me, and, let me interject a little bit there.
Okay.
And I'm, I am really thrilled, and, and I'll ask Michelle to jump in on this as well. I am really thrilled that you asked that question, because to answer your question, yes, it has been challenging, and it's incumbent upon us to completely understand the culture, the issues that are occurring in each district, and really making certain that the candidates that we recruit, first of all, understand the challenges and culture, the political nature of the county or the community they're going to be working in, and that there's going to be congruence between what that culture, what the belief systems are in that district and county with the superintendent's belief systems. I mean, putting it very honestly, uh, we, I had a search that we worked in in Maryland, and we, it was, it was clear to us, and it was actually expressed to us, that a, a superintendent who was going to be very, and I'll use the word liberal, on the left, was not going to really be successful in that county. It just was factual. And we needed to be able to make sure that we matched the candidate to the county, and it's worked out very well. As a matter of fact, I was just in contact with him, uh, yesterday, and he's doing extremely well. So that is a great question, and living here in Florida now, I, I really, and I follow it very closely, have a clear understanding in terms of those challenges.
Right. Yeah, it's been on the news a lot about the restrooms and things like that that we're aware of, yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
You gave my question, you stole it, so...
Yeah.
You have any, Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I do. I have just one, really. Um, I'm, I've looked at your website, and I see that you not only just do school districts, you do other types of business. Am I correct in assuming that?
Would you say we do other types of businesses? We do assistant superintendents and maybe you got... Would you say we do other types of businesses? We do assistant superintendents and maybe an HR position, things like that?
But it's all educational related?
It's always been educational related, yes. It's all educational.
Um, and you have several postings on here, primarily in other regions of the country.
Right.
Um, northeast, northwest. There's not a whole lot in Florida. And I know there are several, so you don't have any other districts that you're working with in Florida, from what I can see here, other than what you had just mentioned, right?
Right, at this time. But that can be an advantage because we could give you our full attention.
Okay.
We're not doing another search here. We're not competing with another.
Can I also add to that?
Search.
And tha- and thank you for that question. It's, it's important. Um, we had the opportunity to present in Collier County. And uh, it was a very, very positive experience for us. And uh, we were very close to, to getting that position. Uh, we, for some reason, we had a, we were doing, the firm, ten years ago or so, was doing excellent work in Florida. And uh, I don't know why they, they kind of drifted away. But since I've now been associated with the firm the last five years, and now I've been, uh, asked to direct the eastern, uh, region, we are very, very interested in expanding our services to the south. We, we've done work in North Carolina, we've done work, we just placed the, um, the, um, well, Michelle, you placed the Commissioner of Education, right?
State Superintendent for Mississippi, yes.
Yeah.
I did the search in Jackson, Mississippi. I was part of that.
So based on that, you, you, I want to emphasize how you would get our undivided attention
Right.
to make sure that this search is successful. And I want to mention that sometimes boards ask the question of me, what has been the biggest criticism or that we've had after we've done a search? And that criticism has been, when we present candidates to the board, the board tells us, you've made our decision very, very difficult because of the quality of candidates that we pre- present to them.
Okay, because I do know, I have looked at many different sites. And overall, uh, not just the superintendent, C's, but principals and other teachers, all the way down to school bus drivers, the education field has suffered a great hit with, not, I'm not going to say talent, but just the lack of interest to get into the field because of, if you like, uh, the Florida statute book and all of the guidelines and the policies and all. It makes it more difficult. A lot of people are going into the business side of doing things instead of the public, uh, arena. So I know it's difficult to find, and there are so many superintendent jobs posted throughout the United States.
Right.
I was really shocked to see that there's that many out there. And um, what is the biggest, um, district? You know, because I done, okay, I'm looking to see how many, uh, students are in the districts that you have seated. What is the biggest and the lowest number of students that you had? Do you, can you?
We've gone down to, what, eight hundred students, and we've gone up Las Vegas. I did Raleigh and Charlotte and some of those other bigger ti- Las, so those were pretty big. Ralph, you've been doing more searches, what are some of the biggest?
Charlotte Mecklenburg with me.
I did Charlotte Mecklenburg with you.
We're working in Alexandria City. That's not as large as you, seventeen thousand. Um, Washington County, Maryland, was about twenty, twenty-six thousand. We've done smaller districts as well. Um, we also do, we're, we're doing the executive searches. That's all the searches for anyone other than the superintendent in Fairfax County, Virginia, which is one of the largest counties in the country, one of the largest school districts in the country. So we have experience working in.
Big districts, okay.
Very large districts.
Yeah, my degree from Columbia was in urban education.
Something else I think is important, um, to emphasize. You, you have to feel comfortable with who the consultants are as well. Because we work to develop a really close relationship with the board. And uh, and Michelle, you could please add to that. But I mean, it's so important in terms of, I, I really value the relationship we develop with not only the board president, but the entire board. Because it's important that all the board gets all the information all the time and that there's ex-. I'm still in contact with some of the board presidents, particularly, that I've done searches with two, three years ago. They'll call me. And uh, we just developed really close, collaborative, powerful relationships because it's important that that relationship is developed between the consultants and you as a board and the community. Michelle, you want to add to that?
Just, just echoing what you just said. I mean, we are here to service you as a board and help you make the best decision, uh, and for your next superintendent. So whatever your desires are, uh, we will be there to try to meet those needs and support you. Again, making this process is a very tedious process, but to try to lift, uh, burden off you, your shoulders as a board and work collaboratively with all board members, not just, again, as he stated, the president. But we want every board member to feel a part of this, uh, process.
That's all I have.
Ms. Messenger, you have any questions? No? Mr. Chairman?
A question, a comment, a question. This is a really nice product, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Especially kind of walking us through the process. It gives a, kind of a visual for those of us who are new to the process. So I thought that was good. It is a, it is a nice chart you have in the back here. It shows all the.
All of them.
Districts that you've worked with and the people, so I thought that was.
And the numbers there.
And the numbers, yeah. So I think the biggest one I saw was sixty-four thousand up in, or out in Arizona at the Mesa Public School.
Mesa, right.
That's pretty big, so that was good. Uh, there's a gentleman named here in Florida, Mr., where is his name? Legister, is that his name? Richard, Richard Legister. So I didn't hear his name. Would, would he be part of the, the team working with us or not here in Florida? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Actually, actually, I was really excited to have Richard working with us down here, but he, my understanding is relocated just recently to Texas.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just curious.
It would be the three of us, and, and if we needed to bring a fourth, uh, consultant, then we certainly would. And, um, you know, like we said, we'll adapt the work to what you need done in your county. Uh, Michelle had mentioned our stakeholder meetings in, uh, Alexandria City were two full days and two full evenings. We have to do four full days and three full evenings will do it. In Alexandria City, there was a group that wanted to meet and couldn't meet when we were there. And I just had a Zoom meeting with them Tuesday night. So I mean, it was by Zoom, but it was very, very productive. Uh, so we, we have no problem ensuring that, we don't want, we want to protect you as a board, make you look good as a board, and we want everyone to feel and to know, particularly with, with the stakeholders, that their input is valued. We don't want anyone to get angry through the process. It's important that everyone feels valued.
And I have a question for Mr. Dye. So just, I might, if I have questions, I want to talk to these people further. That's legally permissible, I, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. What, is there any, are there, are there questions that I should not ask, avoid asking? Are there any, just kind of legal guidelines, framework for talking to these people or anything you can think of?
Free, free, whatever you want to say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
That's a lot. Thank you.
And that's it for everybody? No responses other than that? Great. Well, thank you very much for, for your presentation, absolutely. And thank you very much for jumping on there, uh, Michelle and Ralph, and, and wish you guys the best, and safe travels back.
Thank you.
To Pinellas, and thank you very much.
Also mention, I really apologize. I wanted to get down there, but my family is traveling. We're, uh, leaving very, very early in the morning tomorrow, so, just for a little, a week. But, um, I apologize for not getting down there. And, uh, I want to thank Amanda, and I'm really, really sorry about not being able to show you that PowerPoint. But I can send her a copy of that PowerPoint that she can share with you. But it's essentially just the summary of a proposal that the home office did. And as, as mentioned before, that stakeholder report that we pr- present to you will be very much similar to the format of the proposal that you received with all the information in it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, so as we end, um, the, that presentation, our third and final presentation, uh, I would like to see if, if we've got a consensus of, there's three that we've heard. Tuesday, obviously, is our voting and decision of, here's who we want to go with. I'd like to see there's a consensus from the board of, uh, one of the firms that stands out that we could possibly even potentially put on the agenda to say, here's who we're going to vote for. Um, so I'd like to see if there is a, a appetite for discussion for that amongst us here. Ms. Forman, you're shaking your head yes. Do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure.
Okay. Or if you don't want to, you don't have to.
No, I, and I have, I have reasons behind, behind my conclusion. And if we want to discuss reasons, I'm happy to. Um, but I lean very heavily to Florida School Board Association.
Okay. Ms. Bray? I think we can come back to reasons if we really need to, if, if there's a, do you have any leaning anywhere? Which way?
I do, but I want to hear from the other board members, to be honest with you.
Sure, that's fine. It works.
I, I will say, the, um, second presenter, who was, uh.
HYA?
Yeah.
Adams?
I'll just say to that one, there was a lot of negative, uh, press about that organization. And, uh, the community actually had an outcry to not use that firm. In another state, I read the entire article and why. And then I looked at the reasons why, um, that they gave. And then I looked at their website, and I'm like, okay, it kind of matches. So I would probably omit that one, but that's just me. But I'd like to hear about the other two from the other board members.
Ms. Messenger, you have a idea?
I've, well, no, actually, I had a question about, um, on Tuesday, is the goal just for us to vote to approve one? Or is the goal to have a contract in place, or just say, vote, a formal vote, this is who we're going with? And then we'll have a contract on another date?
Yeah, I would like to be able to say, this is who we go with. Because our goal was for the thirteenth, Friday next week, would be our first meeting with that, that firm.
But, but if we don't have a contract in place, how will we do that?
I can.
Um, go ahead.
If there's any contract that you're doing that's under fifty thousand dollars, I have the ability to execute that such.
But I think no matter which one we were to pick, eventually we would exceed that fifty thousand dollars. And I suppose when we would exceed that, then.
It has to go back before the board.
Okay, okay. That makes me feel better about that. Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that we could be efficient.
Actually do it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I agree with Mrs. Bray about the second company. Um, and it wasn't for that reason. It was more of, uh, now we're going into reasons. Mrs. Forman was so good about not giving a reason.
I'm not giving any reasons.
Um, but really more of the concern of, of poaching, honestly. Like, I don't want us to do this again in two years. He, he was very careful with his language. It said, not for the contract length. If we give a contract for two years, they're coming for our person in two years after we've worked hard and trained them up and gotten away at work. I'm not doing it. So personally, I'm with you on that one. Um, for the other two, I, I do think I lean more towards FSBA. Um, and aside from, I think, some presentation snafus, I, I liked a lot of things that I heard from this other company as well. Um, and I really think comes down to what, which way the, what the board wants. Because FSBA, to me, was more very much board-led. It will be us. It was not extremely formulaic. It was however we wanted to do it, it was free-forming, and it would be our free form to create. That was my impression of it. The third, um, this McPherson and Jacobson was more formulaic. These are the processes. This is how we're going to do it. We're going to do these videos. We're going to do this. We're going. It was far more formulaic, um, and perhaps the board would prefer that. Um, but I, I do lean more towards FSBA because I truly believe that that will be the way that we get most board-driven decision. Um, but I think that McPherson, Jacobson, also aside from snafus, I think that they said a lot of things that make me believe we would have somebody that would stay with us for a long time. The fact that they are saying in a presentation, we have had our superintendent stay for a significant number of years, means they're not going to poach. They don't want to touch that because they want to be able to go to the next presentation and say, well, look, here's my percentage of people that are staying in a, a position. So I do agree that I lean most towards FSBA, uh, but I, I think there are positives to this other one as well. So, second one, I mean, not second one, third one.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any particular leanings right now. For a decision of this magnitude, I, for lack of a better term, I'd like to sleep on it, so to speak. But I do have some, some thoughts and questions. Number one, Mrs. Bray, how do we do this without going to jail for sunshine laws? I'd like to see the article. But I mean, if you email me the article, then somehow we're talking about.
All you have to do, all you have to do is Google it and, and look. It was in, uh.
You can send it to Ms. Means.
It was in Texas. I don't. It was just one of those, yeah.
Isn't that trying to use her, isn't that using Amanda to communicate between the two of us? I mean.
Well, the, the two of you aren't communicating. Um, but I, it'd be better if she just gave it to the clerk for anybody to look at if they want to.
Okay.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm specifically saying, all you have to do is do the search.
I did, I actually, I did a Google search. I put in HYA, uh, associates, reviews, or something like that. And I didn't, I didn't, it, nothing came up.
Okay, if I can find the article, I will send her the link to that. Um, yeah, I just, I don't know, I just had that. Instinct two, uh, wasn't, was there too, so I don't know.
So what about, what about you, Ms. Saunders? What, going back to Ms.
Well, I'd like to hear, what, Mr. Cho- oh, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry. Never mind.
And, well, actually, what Ms. Messenger said, how many times have you been through this process in, in your, five, six, seven times, I assume?
Well, fortunately, um, I've never been through the process.
Not you as an individual, but I watched it happen.
How many times have I watched it happen? Uh, one time since I've been here. The county I worked at prior was an elected superintendent. But, uh, while I've been here in ten years, there I, uh, was witness to one search. And that's when Mr. Mills was hired.
So the idea of having it formulaic, and Ms. Messenger, you've been through this. One time, we just, we just went with Ms. Saunders. So we've really never been through the.
No one on the board, no one here, right, no, no board member has been through the process of going through a search firm. Now, if you do want to speak to someone who has, the lady that's sitting right there uh, has probably more institutional knowledge of that than, than anyone. And she probably would be able to answer some questions about that.
And then there was Doug I met yesterday at, at the event. He's been, there are a number of, Mr. Frank Bruner, or those. But I guess my question, my thought was, you took, Ms. Messenger tossed about, talked about a formulaic process rather than a. So if I'd been through this before, somebody in there was corporate knowledge, maybe doing it ourselves because we, we've been down this path, we've gone down this road is a good idea. If not, I'd like someone to kind of, who's been down the road before to lead us by the hand, so to speak.
And I think that's probably why Ms. Messenger is saying that a formula has some, uh, you know, some thoughts about it.
Yes. Ms. Messenger, did you get the feeling that, that the FSBA was, didn't have a good plan, so to speak, or a good way of walking us down the road? Or you just thought it was more thought out? Or can you help me understand what you're?
No, I actually said I thought they were the, that would have been my top choice.
Okay.
But it's more because I believe that the power that we have comes from us working together as a board. That is, that is it. We're not one person. We are a body. And I got the impression that that group understands that and will allow this body to drive it the most, which I think we should do. And so I, that is why I lean more towards them. But I can see the benefits of a different path of which, I don't think out of those, either one of those, I don't think there is a bad choice, to be quite honest with you. I think we're going to have a lot of big decisions. I don't see this as one of the biggest ones, to be quite honest with you, because I think we're going to get good candidates with either one of those that we choose. And I think that they both will go through a process, and the process might be different. But I think either way, I think the process will be fruitful or not fruitful, and it won't be based on which company we pick. It will be based on how we function. It will be based on what information we put out there. it will be based on what we say are important things to us, and 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 it'll be based on a lot of other things. But I don't think it'll be based on which of these two companies we pick.
Ms. Saunders, again, for you, what other inputs do you have after having been a superintendent? And you've seen this, you've probably seen it, or you know... I'm just curious to hear what your inputs are on the process as as we select a consulting firm or...
My opinion, sitting here as a spectator, watching and hearing, I do agree that the second firm is the weakest of the three. Uh, I do think Florida is very unique. I've only worked in a senior-level capacity in the state of Florida, but it's very unique. The sunshine laws are very unique. I think the fact that FSBA is very familiar and entrenched in all of that currently is helpful. I think the disadvantage of the third firm of not currently being involved in Florida, for whatever reason, for ten years, says they're not, they're not in touch, nor are these three people from here. They may live here now, they're not familiar. And Florida is a different beast. So if you were asking me, my top choice would be FSBA.
Mr. Dieh, what, you've been through this a couple of times, what what input do you have on the process?
Yeah. The only weakness I saw with FSBA was how far they're stretched.
That is correct.
Um but I think they know the district better than the other two. Which I think is a great advantage. I looked at where a lot of the work has been done with the other two, and I didn't see many places that were similar in Manatee County.
Ms. Barber, what, do you have any, I mean, would you like, I assume we can ask, can she come to the podium? Are we allowed to ask her to come to the podium? You've been involved, I mean, I'm, as a teachers' union representative, I'd be interested to hear what your inputs are on the...
I don't think it's appropriate right now.
I mean, if she, if she...
That's not...
Not, you only think it's appropriate? Okay.
I I would say, I would say, I would say no, just 'cause we're trying to get our our consensus up here from the board level.
So I'll just call her on, call her on the phone and ask you... Okay.
Oh, yeah, she's definitely willing to talk to anybody.
Well, why is it, so explain to me, if I want to have a member of the public come up and provide her input, and she is a member of the teachers' union, she's a stakeholder, why is that not appropriate in a public meeting?
Because right now, we're trying to get consensus amongst ourselves, not be convinced from someone from the public to tell us what they believe, and someone else doesn't have the opportunity to come and do the same thing. Right now, we're just talking amongst our, us five, to see what do we have an appetite to do, which is, do we have a feeling of it's one, two, or three, or it's one, or if it's two of them? That's what this right now currently is, not...
She's a unique member of the public. She is uh the leader of a of a stakeholder organization. Number two is, she might have something that all of us would like to hear, and guess what? I can't, I can't call her and then call you back up and by next Tuesday and say, guess what? Ms. Barber had a great input, this is a really important point, I'd like you all to know it. I can't tell you that. But it would be interesting for the the leader of a major stakeholder to get her input for three minutes as we're trying to decide amongst ourselves. Because when this meet, when you put that gavel down, the ability for us to talk to each other about this is done. So if she, if she, if, if, like if I...
But it's not, the ability to talk to her is not done.
But if she calls me and if we have a conversation and I say, hey, this, that's why I'm asking all these people, because if I talk to Ms. Saunders and she has something great to say, I can't call the rest of you and go, "Ms. Saunders made a great point." If Mr. Dieh has something to say, I can't call the rest of you and say, "Miss, Mr. Dieh had a great point." If Ms. Barber has something to say, and I think it's a great point, I can't call you all and go, "Ms. Barber made a great point, so why not hear for them now for three minutes?" And she's not gonna come up for a half an hour and just let her say, "This is my input as the leader of the teachers' union stake..."
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Yep.
I'll, I'll, I'll go with whatever the board wants to do. I I mean, I particularly don't...
I want, I don't think it's...
It doesn't, it doesn't need a soap, I mean, if anybody wants her to come up, we know obviously Mr. Tatum does, would you, are you okay with her coming up and speaking?
I wanted to hear your opinion on what you heard from the presentation.
Well, I'll, I mean, I'll eventually definitely say it. Do you want her, I mean, I'll, I'll go with what the board wants.
I'm completely agnostic on it.
You don't care either way? Do you care either way?
I think this is a board conversation right now. I think once we have a consensus, then I think then, you know, we could have her input or their input collectively, because this is just the beginning of this process. And the union and Ask Me and everyone else will have a seat at the table from what I understand this process goes through. So I don't have a problem in waiting and letting that happen at the right time. I just don't think now is the right time, that's my consensus.
Even if she, so even for her just to come up and say, "This is my input on the process on the consultants." Not hearing from her is not...
It's so, so my que, my pres, the precedent then will be set for anybody who's a stakeholder who wants to sit up there at a workshop, can just come up whenever, no, there's a public comment, there's a process to that. I'm not saying I don't want to hear from her, that's not even, that's not what we're discussing. I do think you can still say, on Tuesday, before the vote, there's gonna be a discussion where you could still say, hey, I had some time to talk to so-and-so, what about that? And we could completely change on Tuesday based off of something that happens. Who knows, maybe someone calls up and says, "I don't want the, want it anymore."
This is what my point about, about having workshops was for, though, is to make it informal, so that if Mr. Smith and Mrs. Jones are out there in the audience and they, and they, this is what a work... This is the limiting, this is what I was...
Okay, stop, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I I do have an opinion, and that is, I don't think it's appropriate. This is a discussion of who to hire to operate the search. It's not a discussion about um about the candidates or anything involved in the search. And it's an executive decision that I don't think the union has a place at this point. I just don't think it's appropriate. Sorry, Pat. But um, you know, so, and and I do have reasons for my opinions, you know, for my, for my recommendation of FSBA, but uh, but I'll, please, yeah, I want to give my reasons because everybody else is.
I'll get back to you. Okay, so, Ms. Barber, we'll hear from you perhaps a different time. Was there anything else that you wanted to bring up?
No, that's all I have.
So I, so my opinion on it, I lean towards um the Florida School Board Association, mainly because about, it's about relationships. They, Mr. Dieh said it, they know the district, they know Manatee County. Um there is, this is not someone randomly that is trying to earn our our business. They, they know what uh has gone on here, they know the current board members, they know, I mean, I I tend to lean towards what are the relationships like? Because we are gonna be working with them to build this pool of candidates. I do think that we're gonna get good candidate, I think we're, this county is in a great place. So we're gonna get great candidates, whether we use HYZ, ABC, FSBA, whatever acronym you want to use, it doesn't matter. I I don't think that's gonna be the issue. I think, to me, I look at, who do I want to work with? And I think that FSBA, in my personal opinion, is the best candidate for us to work with because they know Manatee County. When you go back and you look at leadership, and I don't care if it's from principals to administrators, et cetera, typically, when you get people from outside of the county, it just sometimes doesn't work. And 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 I, and anomaly. But I've seen it, I've been there, and and this is, Florida is a different animal. Not only is Florida a different animal than all their states, I think Manatee County is different than Orange, than Collier, than all those others. So to me, I go back to the relationship, who knows us the best? And it's FSBA. And I believe that us as a board will work really well with them. They know us, we know them, um I would tend to lean toward toward FSBA. And that was my reason, so yes, we can go back to Ms. Forman for her reasons.
I have reasons.
And then we can go to Ms. Spray for your answer and then your reasons.
One is transparency. FSBA understands the importance of transparency. Um not just some, because it's the law, but but they... I I followed when Orange County was doing theirs. And what they had on their website, it's not there anymore, I don't think. But I made co, I made screenshots of it, because I was just so impressed with it. It is, anybody in the district, anybody could go and see what was going on and and uh and follow things, and I just thought that was excellent. The fact that, I think we've ruled out number two, but the fact that number three, number one, first of all, didn't understand Florida sunshine, and second, said, oh, we'll give you five or six. And it's like, how can, you know, how can you do that? You know, um I I think that that indicates a lack of transparency. Also, I asked questions about how they would handle the um the task meetings. And it concerns me that they sent somebody here who didn't have the PowerPoint. And the person who had the PowerPoint was obviously not competent to handle it. And I find that really disturbing, because I don't want that happening in any of our meetings. And so, and when I did the Google and researched them, the only thing bad on them, I didn't find anything bad about um them, they're not vetting candidates well. But there were three different districts that got rid of them in the middle of the search because of problems. And um this is our face to the community of how we are presenting, how we are looking, how we are doing our due diligence. And I want to maintain it in a very professional manner, in a very transparent manner, and a competent manner, and I'm, I am comfortable with FSBA, so.
Thank you.
That's mine.
Okay.
Ms. Spray?
I like the fact that McPherson, Jacobson could do a video. If, I don't know if FSBA has that capability to do that as well. That would be an added touch for me, because admittedly, I was like, I'm not so sure about FSBA uh based on the conference I went to. And then I talked to another person about them. And then I did my own research, just like I did with the rest of these. I'm so thankful that we were given these names in advance, because we could do our due diligence on our own time. And if you saw my house, you would see, oh, she's really done her research. So um, and I wasn't very supportive of FSBA. The concern is, are they spread too thin in Florida? And, you know, they're doing how many Florida, and there's how many openings right now, and that does concern me. But I kind of, um, I felt comfortable with the presentation from them today. But there is another thing that I'm, we pay them dues every year. So are we getting that price cut? Are we getting any kind of benefit? Because we are paying them an additional annual fee to belong to that organization, am I correct? And is, and that twenty-some thousand dollars a year?
We do pay a fee to belong to that organization.
Right, so um, to me, it's, you know, okay, we already belong to the organization, now we're gonna pay them an additional thirty-five thousand, plus they don't have the ended amount, any NTE. So I don't know what that would come out to be. So I don't know if there's an associated cost, is this the basic, the thirty-five thousand? Uh, yeah, thirty-five thousand plus travel? Like the other ones that you, that were emailed to us had an NTE score behind it, two of them did. This one did not. So I would hope that they could say, okay, um, I guess I'm asking for a discount. We already belong to your organization. Why wouldn't we get some kind of a cost break for that? That would be my biggest thing. We already pay you twenty-some thousand a year. This should be, you know, we should get a discount. That's just the way I look at it. I know, I see Ms. Forman saying, no, no, no. But um I was pleasantly surprised uh after talking to them at another venue that there were some members at. And I'm like, oh, wow, I did not know that. So I took the note and did the research, and I was real pleasantly surprised. So I'm gonna most lean toward them as well. Out of these two, uh that's who I would lean towards.
I thought she did say she was gonna give us...
It, Amina just sent it to you.
Oh.
The, the price of what they would charge? Is that what this is?
It's on page seven.
I got you.
You're getting faster than I am. Okay.
Obviously, there's a range there.
So based on those numbers, it'd be fifty thousand five hundred, max.
Max.
Okay, that's...
Because they gave a range of stuff. So I did max numbers, max numbers, fifty thousand five hundred, which is in line with the other two.
Okay, that's, alright, that's what I wanted to know, because I didn't, I guess I didn't look that far down, am I? Okay. But that, that's all I have.
And I, I guess, in in a response, I would say probably to the um, to were a member, member of them, that our membership that we have with them on a yearly basis, it's not about search, searching for superintendents. So I, I look at it, like, I do see what your point is, I completely understand it. I just, it's two different things.
Yeah, I, I understand.
We're just using that same organization for a different um objective. Our twenty thou, what, we pay them in our normal fees, our objective is not to find a superintendent. Now, heck, that doesn't mean we can't ask them for a break, I mean, I'm not saying that. But um I I I think they're all kind of, the pricing, to me, I thought they were all gonna be about the same. And to me, it comes down to relationship and who you're comfortable with during those presentations and um and who you may know from a previous relationships, um if you know any of them. Which obviously, we really, really know the FSBA people. So um, I mean, I'm kind of getting a consensus here of FSBA. So on uh, how do we want to, I guess, Ms. Saunders, how do we want to, if if we feel like there's a consensus right now of FS, FSBA, do we need to um have that on the agenda so that way we can move forward with, if if it were to be approved on Tuesday? Obviously, there's still gonna be a vote.
So this is the last consultants that we had that were coming in, I thought we had two more in the afternoon.
No, no, they all, they've...
All the others canceled?
They canceled.
The J G Consulting and Greenwood Asher and Associates, okay.
Yeah.
I thought...
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I recommend, just because you really can't make a decision today.
Leave it open.
That it be on the agenda, but but keep it, keep it generic.
Yeah, okay.
And then someone can make a motion for who they...
Gotcha.
...want to recommend at the meeting.
Perfect.
And I think Manatee offers a unique opportunity for people to come here. We have, you know, like the county commissioner says, we got a port and an airport right here. So anybody uh that would want to apply at a national level might like that idea, so, yeah, never know.
Ms. Means, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we approached all the consultants to come in today, that they were gonna present today, we told them we'd be voting on it Tuesday, correct? Or we were trying to make a decision, decision on Tuesday? And then, and then do they know about Friday, next Friday's presentation? That that was when we would begin the the relationship, okay?
Oh, okay, there it is, yeah.
And I I just want to make sure, the only reason I'm asking that is, I want everybody to know that, because if we choose someone Tuesday, and then they say, no, we can't meet Friday, now we're pushed back another... now we're pushed back another however many days until they can meet. So, I just didn't know, I felt like.
I have not received confirmation that all of these firms would be available that day, but I.
Okay, okay.
Bye, bye, bye.
Okay, just wanted to know, make sure, because we have that set for, for Friday, next Friday. Any other further discussions on today?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to make the comment to the chair that when we had talked about making workshops more informal and making them discussions, and so, when I, when I bring up a topic, like, I'd like to hear from a member of the public who, who is experiencing what we're doing, the answer is, well, it's an executive session, there's a public comment period, we have to do it like this. I'm like, that's the whole point of a workshop. Like, it would have been like, if Ms. Agruzo had still been here, as a former superintendent, Ms. Agruzo, have you worked with any of these companies before? Yeah, I worked with H Y, H Y A, I wouldn't use them, I didn't have a good experience with them. To me, that's the point of a workshop, it's not an executive session. I would have liked to have brought in some former school board members who have been through the process before and heard from them. You know, I, I thought of this analogy as I was sitting here. It's like, let's say all of us wanted to go on a fishing trip. And we're going to pay fifty thousand dollars to hire a guide and take us out in the ocean to go fishing. And we all pontificate up here about, well, I know what I want in the fishing trip, and I know what I want in a fishing trip, but other people have already used these guides, or other people, none of us up here have any real corporate experience, except maybe Mr. Dye about how to make this very important decision. And I was just, I'm kind of frustrated that it's all of us who know nothing about the process, listening to them who know something about the process, but they're trying to sell us themselves. And there's no other input from the public, from very experienced people in the community, former school board members, Ms. Barber. Ms. Barber, how many of these have you been through in your, in your career? A bunch.
Everyone, some babies.
Exactly, and yet, when I ask the question, can we hear from Ms. Barber to get her input on these consultants and what she sees? The answer is, in a workshop, not in a formal meeting, but in a workshop, no, you can't talk to her. It's an executive session, we got a public comment process. I would just like us to make a workshop, a workshop where we can have discussions, invite members of the public to come that are relevant experts on the topics that we're talking about. Because to me, we just, this was another one of those insular meetings that I watched for hours and hours, where there are no experts out here, we're just kind of, you know, preaching to the choir, so to speak. And I, I, I know that what I'm talking about right now sounds, I'm coming across kind of strongly, but I feel very strongly about this, that these workshops should be times where we can bring in experts and members of the public. Because you've probably heard me, I haven't said much, because I'm like, I don't know, I'm not an expert at this. I'd like to hear what Ms. Barber has to say, I'd like to hear what Ms. Saunders has to say, I'd like to hear what Mr. Dye has to say. I'd like to hear what Frank Brunner has to say, I'd like to hear what Doug, the former superintendent, or former school board member for ten years, who's been through like six of these, or he told me.
Bob.
Bob, Bob, I'm sorry, Bob. But no, we can't have that, because, I don't know why we can't have it. I would just like to ask the chair, if you're going to make these workshops, try to make them more informal, where we can have members of the public and have a discussion, rather than these insular meetings.
Mr. Tatum, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
It may be part of it is a confusion of the structure of a workshop versus a board meeting. A workshop is still structured very se, the workshop still only has these people talking, unless it is predetermined of people coming up to present. And the only time other public people can talk is if they sign up. I think what you're looking for, that venue, is more of a town hall meeting. Then, it's not a structure, but this is still, has to be published, it has to be noticed, and it has to have minutes. It still has to be very, very str, it's still very structured. It's just a little looser, that, because you're not voting on an item, you're seeking information. But the format still is not, anybody can just come up and speak and give, it, it's still controlled. Can, is there a way to change it? I think that's something that we can work with the attorney and research. I'm not, I'm not aware of that, because I'm not seeing a workshop conducted that way.
So, I will, I will say, I will not, I would not want it to be free-nilly, everybody gets to talk, whoever's here, et cetera. But I do agree with you saying, if there are, if, if we can sign, have people, let's say, I mean, today was only one topic. But there's typically two or three topics at a workshop. So, if we feel like we want someone to come in that has prior knowledge or outside knowledge to come in and present during that time period, let's say we're talking about math, and we want to bring in a consultant about math, I'm just naming a topic, right? Or if it was today, and you said, hey, let's bring in Mr. Gauz, can Mr. Gauz come present? He was, because he presented to us about a public comment, or can Ms. Barber present? And it's beforehand, I don't think that that has any, I would be one hundred percent for anybody that has knowledge of that. I don't think we say, hey, let's, let's invite John Smith just to talk about this subject, if he doesn't have anything to do with it, of course. So, I absolutely see your point, and I'm okay with that. It just wasn't communicated that that's what we wanted to do before we just started asking people in the audience questions. Do you know what I mean? And, and so, but I do see your point, and it's absolutely valid of saying, why aren't we having other people? I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I would not be opposed to if we had a section that said, and we all agreed as a board, that said, do you want to listen to prior board members come in and give you their synopsis of, here's how it went down in nineteen eighty-five, or whatever? I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Yeah. But to have John Smith stand up, just to tell them, what is it, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it should be a free range, like a town hall meeting, where we're saying, does anyone else have a question, or a public hearing? Does anyone have a question coming up? So, I think that there is a way we could, we could satisfy that. And I would be one hundred percent okay with that. My question would be, not only to maybe, either to, to, to Mr. Dye, to Ms. Saunders, whoever this maybe can answer this, is if that is something we wanted to do, one, I'm sure it's okay legally, but, two, what's the process like? And I would say, this would be, when you're meeting with, with the superintendent, to bring up a workshop item, and you know someone, and it maybe doesn't have to be right at the meeting, if you then find out that there's someone that could be really relevant to that topic, to then go back and say, hey, you know, I would talk to so-and-so at an event, and they'd be great to come in and present for three minutes on what they're, what they were like, you know, Ms. Harvey, come in, talk about whatever. I think that's probably the best way to go about making it a little more than just presentations at us and us talking about it. Because I agree with you, I think that that would be something that would be, that I would want, that I'd be absolutely okay with. Mr. Dye, do you have something to respond to that? My, my thinking of that?
Yeah, no, keep it light. I feel Mr. Tatum's pain. It's a structure that we operate in. But I agree with your position as the chair. The, it's really, though it's frustrating, it sets a bad precedent. We do presentations all the time during workshops, where people are invited, we just got presentations. And everyone knew they were going to be here to do a presentation. So, starting a new policy of where you, just because somebody happens to be here, who you think has some knowledge of the topic you happen to be discussing, that's kind of a bad precedent. It's better that if you really wanted those people here, you should have them, and they were going to be part of the meeting. So, I, you're getting a little out of the lane when you start just bringing people from the audience, because they really are just the public during one of your workshops. So, they're, they're limited, but there's nothing stopping them from speaking during public comment. So, I, I think you made the right decision.
But the idea on, if beforehand, we said, we'd like for Ms. Barber to speak on this, or, you know, Mr. Gauz came up, you know, I think it was.
Yeah, you could, you could all agree to that.
Add them too, and have them already bookmarked into, into that presentation.
Yes, and, and Ms. Barber is a stakeholder, her group is a stakeholder, and they'll be part of the stakeholder, part of this process with a lot of other folks. So, you're, you're going to get their input.
What about, I understand that not being a town hall, a town hall is, I raise my hand, I have something to say. This is, like, if, if Dr. Agruzo was still here, and I, I, I might want to, I might want to look at her. And Dr. Agruzo, have you worked with any of these companies? And what I'm, what I'm hearing is, you, you can't ask that question in a workshop. You, you, you can't look at Mrs. Barber and go, Mrs. Barber, can you, what, one, and so, now I've got four days to make this decision, I can't talk to any of you about it. If I talk to her individually, and she says, I wouldn't use those people, we used them in nineteen ninety-two, this guy's, I don't trust him, he has integ. You know, I can't, now, I, I can't tell you until Tuesday before the meeting, when you've all already made your decision. I don't understand why, if there are ex, this is a wor, if there are experts in the, in the audience, or someone's opinion that I want, not a town hall, but just, Ms., Dr. Agruzo, have you worked with these people? What are your thoughts on this? Why is that in a workshop? That's the whole point of this. How am I going to get the information, the discussion that I need, and, and, and get the points out to everybody from important?
I don't know the answer, I mean, the, the policy, I mean, that is a, I don't.
Well, and, and you, you can contact individually and speak to anybody you want to. But, but the other thing that was going on is your other board members weren't going along with breaking the rule. I mean, there wasn't a vote, but, but people were going, I agree with the chair, so.
But, but to, but to the point of, who is saying, you can't just point out to the crowd and say, what do you think?
Right.
I, I, I don't think that that's like, oh, that's Chad Choate's rule, or that's the board's rule. That's, Rob, I mean, that's just, I, I, I don't know, I just have never seen it, not saying it can't be done.
It's your governing operation of a school board workshop meeting. It, it's for you to discuss amongst yourself the information, and to seek, if you need to seek any additional information from what's presented, you have to do it individually, and then you have to come back at the next venue and give your two cents as to why. And that's the structure of our venue.
Is it a legal structure, or is it just a policy that we?
It, it's, it's.
Unless they were part of the agenda, if they were going to be presenting to you as part of your workshop.
It's, it's your operating procedures that, that go along with a functioning board by statute and rules and regulations, so.
So, I guess, to your point, you're saying, we have four days to make this decision on who we're going to hire to help us through this process. Who's to say we can't push that decision back? I mean, we could always do that. And that, you know, we can, that would allow people to come and sign up for public comment. I don't think anyone out there signed up for public comment today. Had they.
We have one, but.
Okay, had they, would, I'm asking you respectfully, Chair, is, if Ms. Barber or Ms. Dr. Agruzo had signed up for public comment?
Oh, that'd be sweet.
They, they had, okay, they had made their three-minute talk. And after their three minutes, I would have the opportunity, at a workshop such as this, to say, Ms. Barber, and have that dialogue back and forth with her at that time?
No, I mean, that's.
No.
Theoretically, no, that's not theoretically, that is legally, no, it's not, it's not what this is.
But is it legal, or is it just a policy, that's the way we've done it? Robert's Rules of Order, by the way, are not, are not law, they're just, we, we could run a meeting any way we want to. I want, so, I'd like your opinion as, as our legal attorney. I guess there are no other types of attorneys, other than legal attorneys, aren't there?
Power of attorney.
Yeah, anyway, is it, what we're talking about now, is it law? Like, if we violate it, it, we're violating the law? Or is it just a po, the way we've done it as a, it's kind of convention? And going outside of the convention might not make people happy, or they might throw up their hand. So, it's, and my question, is it law, or is it convention and policy?
It's your policy.
Okay, and the poli, policies can be changed.
Policy is, you don't get into a question and answer with people during public comment.
But if we wanted to change the policy, and I'm not saying we do it right now, I'm just making the point that it's not a law, it's a policy.
Correct.
And I'll, I'll make, I'll say it once again, is that it would have been, like, let's say Mrs., let's say this, this thing that, that, I call it Ms. Agruzo, like I said over the weekend, and she says, you don't want FSBA because of whatever problem. And then, I can't tell you that in advance, and we can't talk about it, so then we have to come back on Tuesday. We've all agreed on FSBA, and then we go, gee, I didn't know that. Okay, well, now we got to put it off to the next board meeting, which is.
We still have a discussion on Tuesday.
But, but.
There's still going to be a motion, a movement, and discussion. So, at that point, if we feel like something's come up.
But if we'd had her there, and she'd have told us that right now, then we, then we have that information, and we can make the decision on Tuesday, because the longer we prolong this, the longer it gets drug out. I, I, I just don't understand why we can't, but anyway, I've gone over before, it's, but it's policy, it's not law. Maybe we can have a workshop on changing the policy. I think we should be able to hear from members of the audience that are experts in the field. If I have a question, then we could all benefit from.
So, then, but then my question comes to, when are we pointing out that way? Because I agree with you, putting them on the schedule. Who is to say they're experts? If I stand up and say, I've done this once before, I'm an expert, am, am I going to, so then if we're pointing someone out in the crowd, but we don't point the other person out in the crowd, and then they stand up and say, wait a minute, I need to speak, because they got to speak, now we're getting into a whole bag of work that we don't even need to be getting into, because we're pointing people out from the crowd. And, and that's where, if they wanted to talk, they knew, the public knows, it's been posted, here's the four presenters that we're going to, now, only three presented, but here's the four that's going to present. And if Dr. Agruzo really had an, an issue with so-and-so, she could have easily signed up for that public comment. I'm not saying you don't want to listen to her, you know, now that she hasn't signed up, but she had the chance to sign up, just like any of the other public did. Now, Tuesday, we'll probably get public comment, that come in and say, you're picking FSBA? Why are you picking FSBA? Well, where were you today during the public comment? They're, they're going to be there Tuesday, we're going to hear that, I'm sure, and maybe not, maybe, maybe nobody really particularly cares about who we pick to, to run it, I don't, I don't know. But that's, we, I just, I feel like, I see what you're saying, but I think we just get into some weeds that all of a sudden, someone stands up and says, I'm a general contractor, I'm an expert on this, but why, why can't I speak?
Because.
And then we're setting a precedent, okay? And then, and then you're going to have people saying, why do you?
Why didn't you pick me?
It's just hard.
Because I didn't have a question, like, I didn't have a question for you. We are, you're right, we're the deciding body. If I want to talk to you, Mr. Jones, you can catch me afterwards. But, like, Dr. Agruzo may not know what she wants to say, she may have just showed up. I don't have public comment, I'm just curious. But I am an expert in this field, I've been a superintendent. And as she listened to the three presentations, like, Dr. Agruzo, what did you think of the three presentations? She hadn't signed up for public comment, but now she's like, yeah, I, I do have some concerns about H Y A because of what I heard, and, and this and that, but I can't, I can't interact with her, I can't have any dialogue with her that might benefit us all. This is, it's a workshop. I just think we should think about workshops being different, we should have a much more informal format, where it doesn't get out of hand, it's not a town hall, but there is an opportunity for dialogue with people who are experts in their field. That's what I would like, and would make me more comfortable.
Mr. Tatum, I'll pull the bylaws.
Pull it.
I'm going to, Amanda, we'll pull the bylaws and the policies. And they're written that way, and we didn't write them, they, they've been there, for how the way of work of conducting business i- is supposed to operate. So, we'll pull them. There's statutory ways to change policies, you've got to discuss it, you've got to notice it for thirty days, et cetera. But that's the place to start, that will give you the answer as to why. Why are we doing this? Why is it written that way? Oh, it is written that way, so that, that's the place to start. And then, if you see something you want to change, then we, we will work with you, Mr. Chapman, myself and I, on giving you the process that will have to then be presented to the board for discussion and notification to the public and so forth. So, we'll have that for you next week.
Yeah, I think that, to your point, the board should have, every member should have the ability to ask people out here, if they, especially if they signed up for three-minute comment. And after all the three-minute people are done, not to discredit any of you that come, after their comments are done collectively, and if we had a question for, say, Ms. Barber had came and did public comment, she was the fifth one out of twenty, I wrote a note, I want her to come back up, and I want to ask her a question. That's the kind of thing, I think, that you're alluding to.
At least in a workshop, maybe not in a.
Workshop and/or formal school board, I don't know if that's, you know, because, I just think sometimes, to your point, the public feels like they're shut out, you know, and I know it's a, we are formal board, we are a formal entity of government. And we cannot allow certain things to happen in this arena. However, I think they have a voice, and I want to hear their voices sometimes, and, and all the time. But if something comes up after they spoke, and it's, I have a question. But if something comes up after they spoke and it's, I have a question, because they may be an expert in that field, then I would want to have that, because I, again, we can't talk to each other. So you're right here, why not have that flexibility? Because I have watch board members have dialogue before, over the years I've watched this body in action. And it was pleasant, it was cordial for other members to be able to talk to the person at the podium. So, um, and I know that, you know, there's been penciled, you know, questions and they were presented after the fact and they were allowed to talk to the person who came on. So that would be my support of, but again, we'll look at the policy. I think that's a good thing to start, where, a good place to start. Look at a policy, see what collectively that we could do through the advice of the attorney and, and say. But I do want the public to know that, you know, this is very early stage of that, so, you know, we need to be able to do that, but.
With, with that said, there is public comment today and it's, they can come and talk whenever they wish. There is public comment today for Mr. Norm Nelson. I do not believe he's in the building. I do believe he emailed us and said if his, and so if he wasn't gonna make it, he has your comments. But I just wanna make sure that he's not here and we address that. Um, I would say the policy issues we've talked about, that there's some concern, I agree. Talk to superintendent during your next briefing, let's move those into the process that we would properly take to, to approach those bylaws and those, um, uh, our policies and we'll go from there. And with that, I'm going to adjourn and we will see you Tuesday.